Good afternoon, everyone. Calling together council time this Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Let's start with the roll call.
Counselor Young?
Here.
Counselor Belkot?
Present.
Counselor Fuentes?
Here.
Counselor Little?
Here.
And Chair Marshall?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, are there amendments to the agenda?
Yes, I have two, counsel. The first one is removing item 4.2, Boards and Commissions. This will come back to you at a later date. The second one is 5.1, would like to add the C Mar building in Battle Round.
Okay. So, there's been a few changes. Then we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is on agenda items only, and you're limited to three minutes. So, do we have anyone signed up?
Chair, if the, if this has been modified, then that's going to affect the folks who want to speak, right?
I believe so. It would have to be on items on the agenda. And so if it's 4.2, that's been removed.
Chair?
Yes.
I think regardless whether an item was removed, it still was posted. And I think it's relevant that people could discuss on that or comment on that issue.
I will leave it to the council. Would you like to allow comment on 4.2?
I think that's fair. If they showed up, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. I think we'll proceed with that.
Gerald?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Gerald Zen- Zenet?
Oh, you know what? Let's, oh, public comment. Okay, I was just looking down further. Go ahead, please.
Can you hear me? Okay. I'm Gerald Zenek. I'm a PCO in 566, and that's in unincorporated Clark County. And I've recently, last weekend, took a poll of many of my constituents on the removal of one of the board members for her vote. And all the people that I talked to, without exception, were in favor of her vote to not support light rail or any tax increase or tolling in proposal for the third bridge that would be west of the current bridge. And that was the feeling of my constituents. And I want to thank Michelle Belkot for standing up and supporting their position. That's my statement.
Thank you.
Chuck Elaine?
Good afternoon, council. This will be short and sweet. I beg you to repeal the Chilachi Bluff SMO because that case has been lost now, and it's time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Roy Holver?
Good afternoon. I, first reason I'm here is to voice my opposition of the council to propose binding language that would add to the council's rules that the members of the council must all be in unison. These people are all elected officials, and they have a constituency that they respond and reply to. And I encourage that we allow that to continue to happen. We just recently had a situation with Michelle Belkot and the actions of other council members, which I strongly oppose. These people are all elected officials. They're public servants. They all have a constituency. And I think that they each and every one have their right, and nobody should be punished for supporting that constituency. As it stands right now, your assault on the language is about power. To change the language, you can change the outcome and secure your political control. This is about politics. This isn't about a CTRAN event. This isn't about we, the people. This is about politics, and I resent that. In regards to Michelle Belkot, nearly 15 years ago, with the Vancouver City Council, we had a very similar incident, and that was with Jean Stewart. And the council, the Trimate or the CTRAN council, wanted to put two initiatives into one, one regarding light rail, on the other regarding the bus transit system. That's it. In the end.
You can have another minute.
Okay. So anyways, she opposed the council. She was the only one. She was chastised for it. She ended up being removed from her position. And in the end, on November 11th, when the initiatives came out, there were two initiatives. Only one was posted. The other one came in 2012. So she was right the whole time, supporting her constituents, very much the same as I believe Michelle Belkot was correct in supporting her constituents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Parmeter?
Hi, council members. My name is Melissa Parmeter. I'm a 15-year resident property owner in Vancouver. I'm here today to ask that Michelle Belkot be reinstated to the CTRAN Board of Directors. Michelle's position on Trimate operations and maintenance represents the majority of cities in Clark County. The county residents have been clear. We do not want light rail on the replacement I-5 bridge, and we certainly do not want to be unfairly burdened with Trimate's operation and maintenance expenses. Michelle is speaking for the Clark County residents who are being marginalized by your actions as a board. Counselors, I urge you to listen to your constituents and reinstate Michelle. Thank you, Michelle, for your fortitude in standing up for me and the residents of Clark County.
Thank you.
Rob Anderson?
Counselors, I want to inform you, and some of you will be served soon, that yesterday I filed in Skamania County, our neighboring county, a civil complaint against the county Counselors Marshall, Young, Fuentes, Little for Open Public Meeting Act violations. Not only did you take final actions on March 12th without legal authority to do so, as made clear by the county attorney's inability to give legal clarity, and as evidenced by Counselor Little's comment on March 19th, that the decision was unbinding, and the county attorney didn't correct that assertion, and now in your pursuit to change your rules and procedures to add powers to remove, but you also clearly and willfully violated OPMA by failing to have the topic of IVR or CTRAN or RTC or anything remotely near this on your agenda, which deprived the public of giving input. Since you all have had training on OPMA and recently even had a refresher training, there's no excuse for these violations, and they demand accountability. Why have you acted in such a rash and reckless manner? Why have you disregarded the public's desire to not want light rail? It appears you want to make Mayor Ann happy and do her bidding rather than your constituents. I've also filed an ethics complaint and sent a letter to Sheriff Horch and P A Golick to open a criminal investigation as well, referring it obviously to a neighboring county for investigation. Now you are rushing to cover for your illegal actions by changing the rules of procedures, yet the people through the charter granted you powers to appoint. You now look to grant yourselves powers to remove without the people's consent. I do not consent. Stop the madness and look to do the people's business instead of Mayor Ann's or worse yet Portland's interests. Above the dais, it says, "In God we trust." Please honor him. Don't mock God. Turn from this course of action, obey the law, and listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa Hardy?
Good afternoon, Teresa Hardy. I'm commenting on the two agenda items, starting with Boards and Commissions. Last week, the councillor for District Two claimed that her alleged absences on committees were rumors and discrepancies. Multiple community members and organizations have now secured the meeting minutes and checked the video in the case of the CTRAN meetings, making sure not to count when she was just late, and found her attendance records on key committees as follows. Absent for five of the 21 CTRAN board meetings with no alternate present. Absent for eight of the 22 Southwest Washington Regional Council, Transportation Council meetings with no alternate present. Absent for four out of the 11 Clark County Climate CAG meetings with no alternate present. This apparent low attendance record is concerning. The county should fact-check this count, investigate whether the councillor for District Two ever notified her alternatives, and consider some kind of action, as well as modify rules of procedure regarding meeting attendance. It appears that from 2023 on, Clark County often went underrepresented or unrepresented on these critical committees and boards, especially looking at the records of the CTRAN. And the CTRAN is where our light rail and I-5 bridge were discussed. Most of that, most of those meetings were 10 members present in person, and we didn't have anyone there. This in addition to the councillor for District Two's attempts to defy the majority of the council and fail to properly represent the county as a whole on the CTRAN board. I implore you to recognize that there are many people in this county who are hardworking people, who work two jobs, who are faced with housing crisis and all that, and they can't show up at these 1 o'clock meetings and things to say the importance of light rail. On the Chilachi Bluff, the council previously stated that they would respect the outcome of the Court of Appeals ruling on the Chilachi service mining overlay. The ruling has happened. Now it is time to finally come into compliance with the Growth Management Act. Thank you.
Thank you.
Win Gersich?
Hi, my name is Win Gersich, and I'm here in support of Michelle being back on her seat because what you did, it just, you have no faith in the people's vote? That is the most unconscionable thing you could do. And if you think you can override it, that's communism. This is so crooked that it's unbelievable. And this thing about the, they all voted against it? Well, you know something? I'm never going to write it. None of my family is either. And if a bus is cheaper, considering all the meetings I've been to, especially today, you got to do the PF OAs. You don't have money for any of this stuff. And then you're going to sit there and put that on the taxpayers', you know, tax them until they have nothing? This is outrageous. But if a bus is cheaper, you're not even looking at a budget at a, something that you can do. If you can do something, budget it half the price, that'll go into the wastewater treatment plants, that'll go into all the other things that you need here. And you've got some major health issue stuff that going on, and you've got no money for that. But you want to put a rail because you had a bunch of young people come here and claim they wanted an option. You can give them an option, Uber and Lyft. The other option is, they could have met some of the people here, got car pools, and car pulled in. You know, there's other ways to get there. And I know because I went through the BART thing in the Bay Area, and I'll tell you this, every time they got money for something, they used it for something else. And then you didn't see anything built until years later. That speed rail in California, they didn't start building it until last year. They got the money 20 years ago. The price went from $10 billion to $16 billion. And who knows what it's going to be by the time they get it done? So, I mean, I feel you're, you know, Ann Ogilvie, or whatever her name is, she is $44 million in debt. Now, this would be a good thing to get everybody to pay into this so that she could pay off her debts and use the money for something else in the meantime. So we don't need to do this because right now, if you don't have any money, you don't bring the whole neighborhood down and the people that wanted you to represent them. And if you don't know to represent us, you don't belong in office. And anybody, this is another thing about the board. That aged board, you didn't give any money to them, but you made them take five shots apiece. Those people are going to be doomed pretty soon with a spike protein in their body. So the main thing is, I think you need to give them some money so that they can actually help people here because they were doing things with planting seeds and flower beds and stuff so people can grow food for themselves. And then you don't have any money for low-income housing for seniors. You know, there's so many other things that you can do besides wasting money on something so that Vancouver profits off of this? And believe me, she's got her signs up now. You know, in my homeowners association, you can't even have signs up until 90 days before an election. All of this stuff is wrong.
Carmen De Leon?
Hello. My name is Carmen De Leon. I go by Mello De Leon, in case you wonder. That's my nickname. So, yeah, I guess I'm going to talk about this ahead of the things too. But, okay, you want to talk about the mess they made over there at the CTRAN? Please make it make sense to me because somebody told me the ridership, daily ridership was like 700. Really? $2 billion on 700 people? Boy, you need those 700 votes, don't you? Because 400,000 people who voted no, you know, obviously disagree with your petty less than 5,000, I'm just giving you that, less than $5,000 people a day ridership? How much is that per day for them? You know, what, $2 billion? How many neighborhoods could you build? Let me tell you this much. I read the thing. One train cost 20 billion, 20 million. One bus cost 1 million. So for the price of one train, we can get 19 city buses instead of one train. And if she wants to talk about absences, that's just fine because isn't that funny how you don't have to be there to already know that the constituents don't want this? So I don't really care if she was here or not because when it came down to it, she knew her base. And from everybody who has shown up in this room, the vast majority has supported her, thanked her, and congratulated her. So keep being absent because you have a good grip on reality and your constituency. Thank you. And like I said, I went to the bus stop. The little canopy is what, 1,500? And you want to spend $2 billion, a billion on each stop? Where's the sense in all of this? We have a president who obviously you guys don't want to listen to because nobody's trying to get people automatically deported when they commit a felony. You welcome the felons to this country? Okay. Don't listen to the president, but he's not going to support this waste of money. How do you justify less than 4,000 people a day ridership to 400,000 voters and $2 billion with a B dollars? As a businessperson, I would invest $2, $3,000 knowing I'd make $2, $3,000 back, but I'm not going to invest $2, $3 million knowing I might get 5 million back in 20 years off these petty, measly, less than 5,000 voters you guys are trying to satisfy, and you don't even live near there? You don't have to put up with all the parking and headache it's going to be to build these things. Why do you even care what's going on downtown when you're over there on 4th plane? I don't get it. You know, you're listening to the wrong people because they're in debt up to their ears, and if you want to join them, go ahead.
Thank you. Your time is up.
David McDonald?
Good afternoon, counselors. My name is David McDonald. I'm the attorney for Friends of Clark County in the case of Friends of Clark County versus Clark County. I saw, I'm going to speak to item 5.1. It's listed as new business. To some of us, it seems like old business. And I thought before we got into what you, our discussion is going to be, I would just give you a quick summary of how we got here. In January of 2021, Granite Construction filed a application for a CPZ change, which was a comprehensive plan and zoning map change for 330 acres in Chilachi Bluff. In, on December 1st, 2021, the county issued a DNS on its SEPA analysis. On December 2nd, the Planning Commission held a work session on both the SMO and the SEPA analysis and on, subsequently, Friends of Clark County filed a timely appeal of the SEPA. On December 16th, 2021, the Planning Commission held its hearing and recommended that the SMO be allowed. In, on January 19th, 2022, the council had its work session, and then on March 15th, 2022, the council had back-to-back hearings where only three counselors were present. The votes were two to one, two against the SEPA appeal, one in favor, and two for the SMO and one against the SMO. But because they needed three votes to get an action, the SEPA was deemed denied and the SMO was deemed denied. In late June, early July, the council took other action and passed, and just passed the SMO on July 22nd. We took a timely appeal. Since that time, the council has had work sessions in front of the Planning Commission, work sessions in front of the council, two council hearings, a hearing in front of the Planning Commission. And it has now been two years since the opinion of the Growth Board found the county noncompliant. They did that on March 23rd, 2023. On March 10th, the Court of Appeals found for Friends of Clark County and affirmed the board that the county is out of compliance. The SMO has, still has a valid order of invalidity. I've noticed that the repeal is now back on the Planning Commission work session scheduled for April 3rd. We look forward to the deliberations today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Chair, as right before Michelle calls the next person, I just wanted to note on the agenda online, it does have 5.1 Chilachi Bluff, so the amendment would be 5.2, but the link to the actual Word document unfortunately was missed adding the 5.1 on the hard copy, but it is online. So it is, it is on the agenda. I have looked at mine as well. So it should be 5.1 Chilachi Bluff discussion and then 5.2, the amendment.
Okay, so.
On the link online, it is not included on the Word document, but it is included embedded into the agenda online, though.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you for that. Okay, next person.
Kirk Van Gelder? No, Kirk? That's all that I have signed up. I do have a couple online, Chair. Unless I've missed anybody else in the room that didn't get signed up? Did you?
I did not sign up, but there's open comment after.
No, it's just for, um, um.
Yeah, I did that for maybe all around, like.
If you would like to, go ahead and, go ahead and just state your name for the record, please.
Sure. Mark Moore, Downtown. Happy to be a new Downtown resident, one of the new apartment buildings Downtown. I, much has been made in social media commentary about Michelle's attendance record, Michelle, Counselor Belkot's attendance record, and then, of course, there was a statement made today. I would like the record to reflect that it is not Michelle's responsibility to make sure that her alternate is present. It's not any counselor's responsibility to make sure the alternate is present at the meeting. It's the counselor's responsibility to inform the county manager or the chair of the council. Sorry.
You can speak for yourself.
I'm sorry?
You can go ahead and just speak for yourself.
So, well, no, I won't speak just for Michelle. It's everybody's responsibility to inform the proper people. So if there's going to be a fact-finding mission about Michelle's attendance record, I would implore the council to do a comprehensive attendance record examination because this is a false narrative that is being propagated by people who are not aligned with Michelle Belkot. So if there's going to be any examination of counselors' attendance at any of the boards that they participate in or the council, I would encourage you to do a comprehensive survey of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'd take, come on up and provide your testimony. You were called, you were out of the room. Yes.
Kirk Van Gelder, lifetime Clark County resident. Chair Marshall, you asked us last time on Tuesday to be respectful because of clapping and all of that, which 100-plus of us did very well on that. I believe you would agree with that. But at the same time, that respect goes both ways because it appears that the council's doubling down on not listening to us and moving forward with the, now a policy or something, policy change. And we'll talk about that in a moment. So, I, last time I was here, I reminded you of Article 1, "All political powers inherent in the people and governments derive their just powers from the consent of the government and are established to protect and maintain individual rights." Our rights are to be represented by the people that we've elected. And I also told you that that was mandatory, the provisions, Article 29, provisions of this constitution are mandatory unless by express words there declared to be otherwise. So that means that you as elected officials need to abide by that to protect our rights. Our rights have been very clear on this issue with light rail and anything regarding that. It's a hard no by the people in Clark County. So it's amazing because now we can go down to Section 30 or Article 30 of Rights Reserve. "The enumerations in this constitution of certain rights shall not be construed, deny others retained by the people." So that tells us that anything that you want to do in, from the constitution can't be to deny us our rights. I would presume that you would then go, any ordinance that you create is way subservient to the constitution. And so if you are making policies that restrict our rights even further to be represented, I would say that that is in violation of your oath, which is to uphold the constitution. And I will remember, remind you of Section 33, recall of elective officers. Every elected public officer of the state of Washington is subject to recall and discharge by legal voters of the state, of the division of the state from which he was elected, whenever a petition demanding his recall, reciting that such officer has committed some acts or acts of malfeasance or malfeasance while in office. And here's a key part, or who has violated his oath of office, stating the matters complained of, signed by the percentages, and then put to the people to be removed. And I would say, I'm going to say that I agreed, I would, I could agree with my counselor, Mr. Little, if. counselor, Mr. Little, if the four of you had agreed to, your people had agreed with you, I would agree with you. I know.
Thank you.
So, but that isn't what happened. All of them, all of your constituents refused that, and yet you're not listening.
Okay.
I don't have anybody else signed up, unless somebody didn't get to sign up. I do have four online.
Okay, let's go.
Caller, you've been sent a request to unmute. Please state your name for the record and go ahead with your public comment.
God afternoon, Kimberly Goheen Elbin. So my first comment's going to be that when Gersich put on some medical, very important stuff on this morning's Board of Health meeting, and I also submitted a letter today that I fought good and hard to get it on last night, and thank God for the clerk that did do this. And she, she served the public well. I'll state that Kathleen Otto, the unelected county manager, just spoke of a very important problem that has been going on for those of us that consistently look each week. We print out agenda, we print things to put it on our record here, and that she said the hard document didn't show what the online does, and that's a fact. I think with that said, she should have put on, when they did add the Chilachi Prairie, and my letter that I submitted mentions Chilachi Prairie, that they put updated like they did for my letter. So there's a lot of issues that the public doesn't need, or that the public does not know. For those of us, and so I'm going to mention a little bit about my letter. Those of us that actually have boots on the ground, I know for me, I've been, for taking in the Clark County Council for almost three years now, and in Vancouver where I was born for four, and their needs, is it surprising that the Democrat Party did evil instead of good in the fact that I would bring up absences for any council member? So my, my letter is heartfelt to the Republican Party. We serve God, we serve family and country, and there needs to be the unity in our, in our party there that with those of us, and everybody knows me as a PCO there, and I've spoken up about all this, that they could have, we all need to get together kindly. I have to watch what I say because our enemies will use it against us, right? But who's doing good, Republican Party? Are we doing good or are we doing evil? If we're doing good, we can rest assure in our Creator that I am okay and that you are okay. So we do not need to do any internal arguing, fighting, or anything. Those that are in leadership need to humble themselves. I wrote that in my letter very kindly because I'm aware of what's happening here. You need to understand this is a spiritual warfare, and we serve and give God all glory. It's not to anybody there or anybody here. It is for His glory that we serve the other people. And I'm, I'm not going to put up with any more of this division because, why? Because we do not want division. My grandchildren's name is Unity is one of them, and the bottom child is Joy. And God used Biden to put unity and joy around the world. And by God, I'm going to get my grandchildren out of state capture here in Washington State. In the meantime, God put me on a grassroots level. I was in the party, Republican Party, five years ago, and let me tell you.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up.
Caller, you've been sent a request to unmute. Please state your name for the record and go ahead with your comment.
Good morning, Council. This is Margaret, Clark County resident. And I, I do believe it's important to keep Michelle Belkot on the council because so far she's the only counselor that's looking at some of these alarming facts that are coming out about the IBR plans and their, their data or lack thereof. Let's just go to the transit ridership, something that's a big part of this CTRAN board. Looking at the IBR, they, they state that their existing conditions in their 2024 draft supplemental environmental impact statement is 3,300 riders. What is that based on? An onboard survey done in 2005. Does that concern any of you? Data from 2005, not actual ridership counts, but an onboard survey. Okay, so let's jump ahead. We don't actually, they haven't submitted any data. Although this was done in 2024, they did not update actual ridership numbers for the DFEIF. So I did request information about it currently on the express buses crossing I-5 on weekdays, 600 riders. Okay, both ways, that could be considered 300 in each direction. Route 60 to the Delta Park Max Light Rail Station, 900 weekday boarding. Okay, 450 riders each way over a 21-hour period. That does not justify light rail by any stretch of the imagination. No wonder they didn't include real ridership data. But Michelle Belkot is interested in real ridership data. My question to you as a council, why aren't you interested in us having the facts? This draft supplemental environmental impact statement is the basis for light rail. There is nothing there data-wise to support light rail. This should be concerning to you. And you're advocating it like it's a great idea. But the information, it's not accurate, it's not updated. Last week I told you about the pedestrians and bicyclists, and they took one data point and called it an average. And that data point of about 300 people crossing the bridge, they claimed, they then lifted to 410 people because it was a smoky day. And there was a study that told them they were able to do that. Again, not real data. I found out this last week, they had real data. They just didn't want to tell us what it was. Wow. Another piece of.
Okay, thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Doug Brenton, you've been sent a request to unmute. Go ahead with your public comment. Yes, sir.
Okay, Doug Brenton, I've been a resident of Clark County for the last 27 years. And I want to say the voters of Clark County do not want light rail. We have consistently voted it down. I remember that this has come up multiple times in the past. This is not anything we want. We don't want to be paying for TriMet or CTRAN or TriMet operations, sorry, CTRAN is Washington, TriMet operations. That isn't anything that we need. I agree with one of the people that mentioned bus options. That's a great option, much less expensive, and much easier to build into the bridge. I also want to state that Michelle Belkot needs to be reinstated. She does represent Clark County and her constituents. And I want to say that I stand behind her and support her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Cleveland, you've been sent a request to unmute. Please go ahead with your public comment.
Is it working now?
Yes, ma'am.
There's some feedback.
Okay, I think I might have fixed it. All right.
I think we're fixing it on our line, too.
You're good.
All right. Okay, so I don't know if it's on the, if it's something I'm supposed to be commenting about in public comment here, but it was already spoken of and you allowed it. So to Mr. Van Gelder's point, Councilor Belkot is my representative, and she does not represent my feelings with light rail because I think it's irresponsible not to at least make the bridge light rail ready. We don't know where we're going to be in 20 years. Let's look to the future, not to our, what we think we need now. To the Chair, I'm wondering why you're not holding Kimberly to the rules. She's talking about God giving us a Bible lesson and Democrats being evil. That's nothing to do with the county. Really hope we can crack down on that. Kimberly, there's a separation between God and state, and the council serves the state. Let's just let that be known. To all on Chilachi Prairie, David McDonald, he knows more about this than any of you or me or any of the environmental groups. He is the one to ask. Please listen to him, counsel. He knows what he is talking about. He's going to prevail on this. We're all behind him. Bonneville, please, still, I've been out of the loop for a while because I just thought, you know, with this new council, you guys could take it from here and I could back off for a while. But please, counsel, still reinstate the CAG. The community needs to be involved. Whether or not you fixed it with the police having a schedule and signing in and out on, on the machine, they still need, they still need the community to be involved. They're the ones that live next to it. They're the ones that know what's going on. They're the ones that need the voice. The community always needs the voice. I know that one of our councilors that we have now in District 3 is really about community and giving the community a voice. And we just, we need to promote this in every aspect and especially with something as serious as what's going on at Bonneville. All right, have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Second public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to old business, we have the minutes of March 19, 2025. Are there any corrections? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Onto new business and 5.1 is Chilachi Bluff. Okay, who's presenting on that?
I'll invite Oliver up here as well. But I just, knowing we've had some discussions with council about this and wanted to solidify council's direction in a public meeting. So as one of the community members stated, there is a planning commission meeting already scheduled, but we did want to make sure that council had the opportunity to provide that clear direction on our path forward so that we can start moving forward with that process.
Okay, thank you. So Oliver, can you let us know where we're at, at this point? Or is there a summary? Or are you just going to leave it to us to chat about it?
I'm going to leave it to the council to chat about that, and maybe the legal counsel can also chime in. I think the only thing I will say is that there are some timelines that the council should know, and I'll leave that up to our legal counsel.
This is Chris Cook, Chief Deputy Prosecuting Attorney for the Civil Division. I'm not sure what timelines you're talking about, Oliver, but my understanding was that planning is seeking the thumbs up, the approval from council to go ahead with the proceedings that are necessary in order to consider repeal of the Chilachi Bluff ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct. What I mean, the timeline, I mean, and I don't think council is there, is that the hearing or the ruling from the Court of Appeals was March 10.
Right.
Yeah, that's where I'm going.
Okay, thank you. So the, the Court of Appeals ruling was not yet three weeks ago. On April 9, if the county is to appeal the Court of Appeals ruling, that's the deadline. So if the county decides instead of going to the Supreme Court, which is a very iffy proposition because they don't take most cases that come to them, and then of the ones that they take, most of what they do is to affirm the lower court. In any event, if what you decide is to appeal rather than to consider repeal, the deadline for appealing is April 9. Thank you, Oliver.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those timelines. Counselor Little, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, thanks, sure. Yeah, I heard in the comments that it's been two years since there's a decision that we're out of compliance. And I'm new, but I would, it would be in my interest to try to get in compliance as soon as possible and not challenge it any further. I've, I've heard that stories that we may be risking funding sources that we could be using in our community because of being out of compliance. So I would be in, trying to get a thumbs up here to move forward with the proceedings to repeal.
Counselor, could I respond, Chair?
Yes.
As of yet, the county has lost $0.00. We are lucky. We have lost $0.00 in loans and grants because of this. There are certain loans and grants that the county is not eligible to apply for as long as we are out of compliance. So for the future, there is certainly a potential, while the county is not in compliance, of losing money. But the good news is it hasn't happened yet.
My understanding is different from that, from what was reported. I thought it was down to 1.2 million, but there was still.
No, those are loan requests that Public Works actually has not submitted yet and cannot be submitted and signed because we're not eligible to apply for them until after the county is compliant. So we are ineligible for them. Have we lost them? Well, no.
In practicality, that might be a fine point, but if we have, we're not eligible because we're out of compliance, then.
That's the case right now, but we have time to get into compliance and apply for them. I actually checked with the Clean Water Division on this yesterday. I said, so what's the deadline? It's like 2028?
Great. That's, that's great news. Any other comments from the council? Go ahead. Counselor Young?
Sure, I'll just echo some of the things that I've said in the past. My stance really hasn't changed at all. And I'm concerned about the unintended consequences of this decision. I believe it will lead to a situation where we will now receive surface mine overlay requests with absolutely zero information attached because any information provided to us will need to be studied, and it's expensive to do that. And so I think the natural outcome of that is going to be that we have less information available to us when we make those decisions. However, you know, our time to go through this process has come and gone, and it's time to move on.
Okay, thank you. And my position's been consistent, too. I've wanted us to come into compliance with the Growth Management Act. It's good to hear that we're still be eligible for some of those grants going forward. And I think in repealing it, and there, there is a requirement now for surface mining overlay that they do an environmental impact statement. So we'll receive a great deal of information, more than we would have otherwise. So as I understand it. So is that, any other comments from anyone related to this?
Chair, I just want for the record as well that I, my position stands with becoming compliance with the GMA, in compliance with the GMA.
Counselor Belkot?
I'm echoing what Counselor Young said. I think it's time to move on.
Yeah, to clarify, my move on means to go into compliance, yes, to repeal.
Yes.
Great. And so what would the next steps be? This will go to the Planning Commission and then come back to us for official?
Yes.
Repeal?
Thank you. I would like that to be a direction from council to staff. We have scheduled a work session with the Planning Commission on April 3. And following that, then the hearing will be on April 17 with a staff report to repeal, following your direction to move forward. with a staff report to repeal, following your direction to move forward.
Great. Okay, thank you. I think everybody's expressed their opinion and they can raise their thumbs as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, five point two, C Mar.
Good afternoon, Council. Michelle Schuster, Director of Internal Services with Clark County. Today, I'm here before you to get some direction on a property that the county owns. In nineteen ninety-three, Community Services purchased with Community Development Block Grant, seven oh one East Main Street. And with that block grant, there are restrictions on what the property can be used for. In two thousand and nine, we began leasing that property, C Mar, and they are currently on a month-to-month agreement. And that property is used for their WIC program, which is their Women, Infant and Children Nutritional Program, and also their Maternity Support Services Program. In two thousand and nineteen, it was part of the MANG report. And it was identified that over the next twenty years, from two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty-nine, that we should be paying approximately one point seven million dollars into that building of repairs and maintenance. In the thirty-two years we've owned the building, there really has been no repairs put into it. So it is in pretty sorry shape at the moment. We recently, there was a grant application by Community Services to look at getting money. And so we did put in a grant application for this building to see if we could be awarded any of the up to four hundred thousand dollars to put some money into repairs of the building. It does look like we are possibly being recommended to receive up to two hundred thousand dollars. That does have to go through a period, so it's not a guaranteed yet. But before we accept this money, since there were many worthy candidates for this bucket of money, we wanted to make sure that we're proceeding in the best way with this property. Typically, to get rid of a block grant building, you have to sell it at fair market, full fair market value. And because this building is in that main development quarter in Battleground, the fair market value on this building, I don't have an exact value, would be pretty great with where it's located. And so it would be something that would be infeasible for C Mar to purchase it at that full value. So we did reach out to HUD because we've always been told that we couldn't gift it to C Mar. We couldn't sell it for a reduced amount. So Rebecca Royce and Michael Torres with Community Services, who I do believe are on the call this afternoon, reached out to HUD to see if there was any exceptions to this rule. And HUD did tell us that we can offer to sell the building to a dollar to C Mar if we would like as a special sale. There would be a condition on that, that we would have to put a covenant with the property that for five years, they would have to continue to serve the low-income population. And then after the five years is up, they can do what they want with the property. All money from the sale, whether we sell it for a dollar to C Mar or a full market value, goes back into the HUD Community Block Program. No money from a sale of this building could ever come to the county. So just some knowledge on that. So at this point, we would like some direction from the council is, do we want to look at selling this property to C Mar at this point for the dollar? Do we want to look at possibly selling the building at the fair market value? Or do we want to continue to lease it to C Mar and get into another lease agreement with them? And then try to find money to do all the repairs needed on this building? And as I said, the MANG report identified the next twenty years, about one point seven million. At this point, we know it needs a roof, some parking lot repairs, painting, new flooring, windows and doors, siding, gutters, some light replacements, bathroom repairs. The HVAC right now is okay, but we know that will be coming to end of life very soon. This building does support twelve to thirteen hundred clients per month for that upper area. So it does serve a lot of people. So at this point, we're just looking for some direction before we do move forward with this grant to make sure that it does make sense for the county to look at accepting this, should it come our way? Or if we should look at other options for this building.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of questions. I'm just curious about what the original intent of the building was, was originally for, to rent to C Mar. Are they interested in obtaining the building for a dollar? And then I did see the long list of repairs and there's a picture right there.
Yeah.
It looks pretty rough. Have we been not doing our due diligence to provide them what they need? And then if we did sell, sell it to them for one dollar, is it in the condition that is legally allowed to be providing those services to the community? Those are just some of the things I'm worried about.
Yeah, so, so we are allowed to sell it for the dollar in the current condition. And then they can always take a loan out on the property that's allowable to do the repairs themselves. With it, I'm not sure what the original purpose back in ninety-three was, but I know with community block grants, they are to serve the underdeveloped. So the uses would have been for something like this. Like I said, the lease we currently have with C Mar didn't come into play till two thousand and nine. And I'm not sure what was being done with the building between ninety-three and two thousand and nine. I don't have records on that. I'm assuming that different tenant was probably in there at that point. We have broached this to C Mar when HUD did say we were allowed to do this. And C Mar is still considering that if they were offered it for a dollar, if they would purchase it. They haven't made that decision yet. I called them again this morning just to double check and they're still thinking on it. So as far as repairs to the building, so we are not allowed to charge rent under the block grant conditions. So the only thing we're allowed to collect from C Mar is utilities each month. And utilities on that property run about eight hundred and fifty to nine hundred dollars a month. So every couple of years, we adjust the rent, the rental rate that can only go towards utilities. And so unfortunately, there is no revenue stream coming in for this. We do have some mandated things like filter changes, you know, fire extinguishers, that type of stuff. So we do spend of our own general fund money through facilities. On average, probably about five thousand dollars a year for things that we have to do. But that's it that we spend per year. I have with previous councils, not this council, but in prior years, come to try and get some money to do repairs on this building. I've been denied it in the past. So I haven't made a request for a number of years now, but it's coming if we keep this building. We can't keep up.
Counselor Young, Belkot, I have more experience in this stuff, but I just want to make sure there's no mold issues or something that would affect the community if it was changed and handed over.
Yeah, at this point, we don't know of anything, but that doesn't mean there's not something there because we haven't done any repairs on it, but nothing is visible at the moment. There is some water damage on some of the ceiling tiles, you can see, but no mold has been identified yet.
And I will say, oh wait, I will say, if it's a county facility, if there's mold, we're going to take care of it. We can't. That's not acceptable for any line of business that we do.
Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
I would like to know whether they're interested in the, the dollar offer before we move forward. Because if they're not, I think that would make it easier to make a decision on this overall, what they want to do.
Yeah.
And then just going back to the asbestos abatement issue, yeah, that's, I mean, you can, you can get into a whole lot of trouble with asbestos issues that can lead into all sorts of legal issues that could get us in trouble. So, yeah.
Couple of questions. One is if we were to sell at fair market value, would the proceeds go back into the CDBG fund, the entire, the entirety of it, or just the original amount?
No, the entire amount. So the fair market value, whatever is actually thought goes back into the HUD.
So it could be, I mean, it could be repurposed for purposes of what we use a block grant for.
Yes.
It could be an additional source of funds to give out in grant funding. You know, one of the things that I would say is I, I know very little about C Mar and then not suggesting that there are any issues or whatever. But I do feel like with the building and the condition that it is, that we ought to do our due diligence if we do sell for a dollar to make sure that they are able financially to conduct those repairs themselves. Otherwise, we should sell the building. And I think that was everything that I had thought about. I'm, I'm probably leaning towards allowing them to continue to stay there. They, I do know that they provide a benefit to the community that is well-needed. So I think sustaining their ability to function is, is a good public investment.
Chair.
Go ahead.
Michelle, did you mention, and I must have not heard if you did, the amounts for capital improvement?
One point seven million total is what the MANG facility condition analysis pointed out back in two thousand and nineteen that we would need to look at doing over the next twenty years to upkeep the building, a full upkeep.
Thank you.
Chair, just one more thing or two I forgot about. I, I would be interested. And when I, you know, say that looking into making sure that they're able to do that, I want to make sure that this is a long-term asset and I would be interested in a longer covenant than five years.
I don't know if HUD would allow that. HUD gets the same. HUD said they would want a five-year. So I don't know.
If we could clarify that, that would be great. Thank you.
And did you say there's two hundred thousand that we could be eligible for, for improvements?
Yes, we put in a grant for four hundred thousand and they said that we could have a two hundred thousand. But there is, I believe, and Counselor Young's actually on this committee, I believe there's a thirty-day public hearing comment before it's truly awarded, if I understand it correctly.
And, and whether this was transferred to C, C Mar or not, that money would still?
No, that, that's a, a grant application the county put in.
The county, so that two hundred thousand would only come to the county if we own it.
And that decision is why I'm here today because that decision does need to be made this week if, if we are interested in keeping in that grant process. If not, they have others they'd like to offer that to if our plan isn't to keep the building.
Okay. And now is this part of the congressionally-directed spending request? Because that ought to be discussed in this decision as well.
Yeah, so that was one, we were asked for a number of things. And so this was one of the ones that I brought up to Jordan about, if he wanted to add this to the list of many items. Because we know we're going to need to find some if we keep it, find some more funding. So this was one Jordan put on his list. I don't know if it was one he presented or not to him.
I think he'll present later today. So, yeah, it's on the agenda later on. And this was Senator Murray's office that invited us to apply. And, and that could, if, and I think it's being looked on favorably, pay for all of the maintenance, correct?
If, if we could get awarded the full amount, yeah.
Yeah, so that's a potential. And now I know this is on Main Street in Battleground and they're doing some downtown redevelopment. I think this is a property they're interested in as well. And so I think for me, the ability to get potentially all of the money to pay for the repairs, it compels me to want to hang on to it and, and work with the city so that whatever we're doing, it's, it's compatible with their larger plans for their downtown area. So that would be my position. And I think, I guess we'll wait and hear more from Jordan a little bit later. But at this point, I, I hate to see that money go.
Could we include Jordan in the discussion now so that we can get a, a path forward for staff? Because unfortunately, because of timing issues, we can do some contingencies, you know, like if you want to do this, if they agree to a one dollar or not, or if council just wants to move forward with this. That way we have that clear direction for staff today. Thank you. Go ahead, Jordan.
Good afternoon, Council. For the record, Jordan Bogie, Senior Policy Analyst. I did have this on our list to discuss as part of policy items. And this project would be one potential project that we could apply for under congressionally-directed spending requests. So I had the chance recently to meet with some of Senator Murray's staff to talk about applying for these CDS funds. These are earmark funds. So individual federal representatives can ask for a particular set of projects. There's an eligibility list for different items, but they can, they can ask for different projects to be funded through the federal budget. And it sounded like this C Mar building upgrade would fit well with some of the requirements of the congressional-directed spending and the types of things they like to spend money on. So typically, we're looking at projects somewhere in the one to two million dollar range. My understanding is that the C Mar building needs about one point seven million dollars of work. And so this, this would fit kind of within the amount of funding that's needed to get the building up to speed. And the fact that it is for service delivery in the community, that it provides a resource, you know, downtown Battleground or C Mar certainly might not be able to afford the same kind of building in the same kind of location were they to move. The fact that they're able to provide these services centrally in Battleground is, is something that the Senator's staff indicated would make this a more competitive project. Now, just to give you, to pump the brakes maybe a little bit, is, so Congress has not yet been able to pass a fiscal twenty-five-year budget. They just recently passed a continuing resolution to fund the federal government through September thirtieth. And in a typical budget process, if you can call there such a thing anymore at the federal level, that is around the same time that Congress would be putting together their fiscal twenty-six budget. And so this project, we would apply for in the fiscal twenty-six budget process. But that hasn't started and there is no fiscal twenty-five budget. So just, so there's a lot of uncertainty around whether or not we'd be able to access these funds in a timely way. We, we hope that Congress can get their act together to, to pass a budget. But it is certainly not a sure thing. And so for instance, the congressionally-directed spending requests for fiscal twenty-five, you know, if there's no fiscal twenty-five budget, then those won't be able to be funded at all. And if the government continues to fund itself in this way, we wouldn't be able to continue. So all that is, is a caveat just to say that these funds aren't certain. But my understanding is that C Mar would be very competitive under, you know, the typical earmark process for congressionally-directed spending requests. And our plan would be to submit this to all three of our federal representatives. So we would submit this to Senator Murray's office, to Senator Campbell's office, and to Representative Luzen Camperez's office to give us as many bites of the apple as possible to see about getting this funded, if that's a direction the council would like to move forward on.
Chair.
Thank you, Jordan. Yes, go ahead, Counselor Little.
Thanks, Jordan. Well, that's huge. Hearing that straight from Murray's office on appropriations, asking, encouraging us to request these funds is a, is kind of a done deal to me. I know it takes a while. It might be a year, but I think we'd get in and we'd have high chances. So if we wouldn't be able to completely fund it through that and it would be maybe a year lag, is there a priority list of, of repairs that must be done in the near term? And what are those compared to the two hundred thousand that maybe we could get in the short term?
If we got the two hundred thousand in the short term, what I would prioritize that to is the roof. We assume the roof will be right about a two hundred thousand dollar roof. And, and that will at least protect the internal structure from leaks that are starting to happen. So I think that would be our priority with that first bucket of money, should we get it.
Great. Any other comments or suggestions? And so assuming we might be in, immediately be able to get that two hundred thousand. And, you know, maybe it's a year longer off for additional funding. I am, you know, I, I think of that twelve hundred, thirteen hundred people who are served and would like that to continue and, you know, and, you know, it's just a shame that the county hasn't kept up with the maintenance and let it get in such sad shape. So I, I would say at this point, hang on to it. And we could entertain at some point in the future selling it for a dollar or selling it entirely. But I think the location for those services, right downtown Battleground, it's, it's a good, it's a good service. Other thoughts?
Yeah, Chair, there's also a hand showing here.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, County Council. My name is Rebecca Royce. I'm Program Coordinator in Community Services. I oversee the Community Development Block Grant Funds where this building was purchased. And I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware that as long as the Community Development Block Grant Funds are in this project, it will be required to follow the CDBG rules. So as Battleground is looking to redevelop the property in their downtown area, the uses of this building will need to be maintained to serve people who are low-income until the five-year or longer covenant is completed if we were to sell the building to C Mar or another entity that would be interested. if we were to sell the building to C Mar or another entity that would be interested in serving people who are low income. So as we're thinking about the development of the City of Battleground, that would be one component that we would need to take into consideration that ensures that the use of the building maintains the Community Development Block Grant requirements.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. Other comments?
Sorry, Rebecca, the screen's too small and I couldn't see you there. I was just curious, though, like if we were to, you know, plan to hang on to it in the hopes that we might get some congressional earmark for it. The 200,000 that has been awarded could be used potentially for the roof. Does that lock in any restrictions, or is it just simply still that if the building were to be sold, the funds would need to go back into the CDBG fund?
The investment of additional funding into the project would not change any restrictions. It just continues the same restrictions that CDBG has for any of the funding that goes into public facilities. And so there wouldn't necessarily be any changes for the additional investment.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. You know, just one last thought, just like, I mean, this is kind of a tough one, because, you know, we could potentially sell the building and work with C Mar to find a new location, too. That is also an option, because I don't know the condition of the building, but I know as a general contractor that it gets to a point where it is no longer worth the money that you're going to invest in it, especially since the City of Battleground is looking at, you know, redevelopment, revamping their downtown. This may be a building that would be best just demolished and rebuilt. So I, you know, I don't know what the right answer is here. It's kind of, we don't know. I mean, if we get those funds from Congress, then maybe it's worth keeping, but also we're putting 1.7 million into a building that I don't even know for sure if it's worth that value when we're done with that investment. So it's not, I mean, it is not local funds, but it still is tax dollars that I think we should be good stewards over.
Yeah, because this building was a bank before, so it was never really met. So this building was a bank before we purchased it. So it's still, even if you put a lot of money into it, it's still not what you would consider a building that tends to have this type of operation in. So you are putting a lot of money into a building that may not ever be the best configuration for these type of services, even with that money put into it. So, yeah. That's, that was my comment. That's why I want to see what they say before we do anything.
Go ahead, Councilor Little.
That was exactly my question, too. I mean, I was going to say, it looks like a drive-through bank.
Yes, that's what that was.
Is your opinion that this building is not serving the best purposes for the?
I think the location is great for it. It's serving a great amount of the population in that North County. So from that aspect, it's good. But from the actual physical constraints of this building, something, you know, taking that money and maybe building something else on that site might actually serve them better than just putting 1.7 million into this building just to keep it at status quo, basically. So.
Is redesigning, at the same time of repair, an option?
Rebecca, is that allowed under the block grant? Do you know?
Architecture and engineering are eligible costs. It prolongs the process. Because these are federal funds, we have to go through a pretty significant process, public comment through environmental review, and then before any architectural or design can be done, if using CDBG funds for those activities. So it could prolong the timeframe of the project moving forward, but could be a component of. If the county were to pay for those services outside of using CDBG funds, it would cut the time in half for getting prepared to do any of that work.
Okay, so Kathleen, did you say that we need to decide on this this week? And why is that?
And I think, Michelle, and it's the process for the grant, I believe, because there's a window of public participation or?
Yeah, for the block grant, to be considered for that grant, we need to make a determination if we want to move forward in that project this week, or need to remove ourselves from that so they can offer the money to someone else, because it's got to go out to a public comment period 30 days. And so we don't have an answer to them, that delays their whole 30-day period for all the other projects that are being considered. So we need to make a call if we want to continue with looking at receiving that $200,000 grant.
When did we apply for that grant? Because that could have been a good time to start talking about this.
Yeah. The applications were due a while ago. We did not know at that time that HUD would even allow us to sell. We just thought our choices at that point were that either we look for some money sources, which is why we applied for the grant, or we had to sell at fair market value. And at that time, that, to me, is the least appealing, because it is a great service for the community to sell it to someone else. So we didn't even have that option until the last couple of weeks to even look at selling it to them for that dollar amount.
One more question for Rebecca. Let's say, again, I have no clue, but let's say the building, you know, we could sell it for just, I'm just going to pick a number, for 2 million. I mean, that has to go back to CDBG, but can it be outside the process, like specifically designated for the purchase of another building for C Mar? Or would it have to go through the entire grant process over again?
We could talk to HUD to determine if we can do a separate process for those funds. We would also want to make sure that we looked at the timing. Due to our timeliness issues with our CDBG funding, we want to make sure that we stay, as we're moving towards being timely for the requirements of that program, that this could impede that whole process of becoming timely, which we've talked about multiple times at the Urban County Policy Board. Regarding the time timeline, we will be becoming before County Council on May 6th for a public hearing for our consolidated plan and annual action plan. And as part of that, we must give 30-day public comment that shows and discusses the activities we are proposing to do, whether Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program dollars. That must be available for the public to view by April 4th to meet the 30-day public comment requirement, which is the reason we're kind of in a tight deadline for this. If the council decides to hold off on making a decision, we will move forward with the idea of providing $200,000 as recommended by the Urban County Policy Board. And then, at a later date, we will need to do a substantial amendment to our annual action plan, another 30-day public comment process, and then come again to the County Council for approval for the substantial amendment. So we can delay the response or the decision, but it will add on to further processes down the line.
Great. Thank you for that. You know, my initial thought on this, too, is I would love to explore that option, you know, potentially selling it, using the proceeds to go towards a new building, and perhaps they can invest some, however that works out, I don't know what a building, what costs that would fulfill their needs. But I do think we should explore that. And the thing that concerns me is I would hate to spend, to take the grant for 200,000, put it into a roof, decide to sell the building, and the new owner raises the building. And then it's $200,000 of tax money that's lost, essentially.
Have we consulted with Battleground? Is Battleground part of the decision-making committee for the CDBG block grants? Do they participate?
They do, yes. They have a seat on the?
Right. And were they supportive of the 200,000 for?
I know that Battleground did reach out to Rebecca afterwards. I'm not sure how they voted. I don't know if they voted for or against this one. But I know they did reach out about partnering for some road repairs right outside this area, if they could use the parking lot for downtown parking. But because of CBD restrictions on this lot, any money, if they, basically, C Mar gets dedicated use of the park, so C Mar would have to give up use of their parking lot. And then we would have to figure out a way to charge for parking that lot, and all that money has to go back into the CBDG if there is parking revenue collected. And Rebecca might be able to speak better on that, because she was the one that was first approached by Battleground. And then if Battleground voted for or against this grant, I'm not sure.
Well, and also, was Battleground aware that the potential that it could be sold?
I know that we have been reached out to by one entity that's working on developing that downtown area and said if we ever did look at selling, they'd like to be put on our plan holder list to be sent the application. And I believe that that party works with some of the development stuff with the city, but I don't know if they have been direct contact. So, because we haven't ever been directed to look at trying to sell, so we haven't directly approached anyone and said, are you interested in ever buying this property? Because we've never been directed to look at selling it. So we don't reach out beforehand.
It's always more complicated than you think.
If I could just ask Rebecca, just as a clarifying what you just said a minute ago, you're saying that we actually could move forward with accepting the grant, and then council can change their mind later, but it will just create a lot of extra work for you and for bringing it back to council if they change their mind. Is that correct?
That is correct. It would be considered a substantial amendment to the process that we're doing now. And so we would come back to the council with that change at a later time.
Would that delay grants for the other potential recipients?
No.
Thank you.
Chair. Well, with that, with knowing that, I would, I would say we should move, as we suggested with that, with that grant proposal and request, but also with Jordan's communications with Murray's office, to keep that going as well. And we can always make a different change direction later, but I know those are very timely requests. So we need a thumbs up?
Yes, please, because I haven't heard that from the majority of the council. Thank you.
And that would still give us the ability to change direction, but it would require more work to substantially amend the request?
By Community Services, yes.
Right. Okay. Is that included in what you're suggesting, Councilor Little?
Yep.
Okay.
Chair.
Yes.
I think I am a bit concerned about the cost of capital improvement. And even if we were to sell it to C Mar for a dollar, if they have the financial capacity to be able to do that level of renovation for a structure that was a bank, right, that I'm pretty sure it's highly utilized, you know, for their needs now. But they do have another location also in Battleground, right? So this isn't the only location in the entire community. It's just, and I agree with, with, with Councilor Young, it's a lot of money that could probably be better utilized as Battleground goes through their downtown revitalization for, for a large piece of property that sits in the heart of the downtown area. So I'm a little apprehensive about potentially even selling it to them.
I'm not sure where we're at as a council in hiding directions.
I think if, I think if council, if the majority of the council want to move forward with the grant as is now, there's still opportunities to have discussion about either selling the C Mar or not, or selling it in another way and get that figured out before. And I'll just need a, we'll need a hard deadline, Rebecca, of when you need that for, to start your, your process, if that's how council wants to move forward.
I would appreciate that, and give me an opportunity to check in with Battleground and?
Yeah, and their mayor is on that, the board.
Chair, could I add one thing? And I think Rebecca tried to get this through, but it may not have come through fully. You know, we have had, there's this thing called timeliness through the federal government, through HUD, and we are struggling with that as a county. So the grants that we have been awarding, it's been taking longer for those to be processed and completed than the standards that HUD gives us. So if we do, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, but if we do move forward with this, and then we pull the plug on it, it sets even more timeliness issues up, because then that $200,000 will be, need to go through the following years' process, start over again, and it impacts our issue of timeliness. Am I correct on that, Rebecca?
That's correct. We have in our Urban County Policy Board, application and funding guidelines, a contingency fund requirement that says that if projects do not move forward by the, by the end of September, which is when we get ready to do the next round of applications, those funds would then be put into the next round of applications, which will delay them being allocated for typically six months or longer, depending on what type of project those funds are then allocated into. If the property is sold at fair market value, then all of those funds will be considered program income and affect our timeliness, about, basically our cash on hand, or the amount of funding we have available. And it will significantly increase what we have available, and therefore take us out of compliance. And then, depending on the timeline for getting those funds reallocated and spent into another project, we are hoping to be back within timeliness by May of next year. And this would significantly delay that. It's not that we can't do that or wouldn't do that, just as a notification, so that, especially the Urban County Policy Board, who we've been discussing these, the timeliness issues with, are aware of the impacts that could happen to the program. If we are untimely for several years in a row, which we've already been untimely for three years, this will be our fourth year, HUD does have the ability to rescind our funding at an amount that they can determine. And so we would lose out on the Community Development Block Grant Funds in general. So we've been working very hard to make sure we get projects up and moving timely and get the funding spent.
Thank you for that, and thus the frustration of government.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, there's always questions, lots of uncertainties. We can only make a decision on what we have control over right now. It sounds like we need to move pretty quickly on the grant, so I would suggest we move forward on the grant as planned. Also, move forward with the conversations about a large appropriation with Senator Murray's office and Congress, and also ask all the questions about what C Mar would like, and not force any decision on a dollar sale or anything like that, but just get started on those first two while asking all the questions. Should we do a thumbs up on that?
I don't know. Kathleen, does that give you the direction needed, or is it too broad?
I think it's clear. I think that direction is clear. The other pieces, do you want to have us look at if we sell it to somebody other than C Mar?
Yes, so if we, if we sell it, I guess, explore all the options. And, you know, I'm concerned about the population that's being served there, and if there's, if they can be served at the other C Mar location, or if a whole new situation needs to be developed. So I think least disruption to services would be great as well. And this would come back to us.
Yes, it will come back to you. We'll work with Rebecca to get the final deadline if council wants to back away from the grant funding and change direction. So we'll get that and communicate with you. So I think I'm hearing two. I need to make sure I have a majority.
I think we're good.
I'm going to be just a negative on this. I just, I just don't think that it's a very good use overall of tax funds. It's a good, worth wealth project, for sure, but if we could get it in a different fashion, I think it would be better.
This, I think, does not foreclose that possibility that we could sell it.
Well, but if we, if we move forward with the grant, we need to spend those dollars, though, because if we do, if we choose to sell the building and we don't use those 200,000, it goes back and it adds to our timeliness issue.
Right. I think that we may have issues with timeliness if we sold it, or if we amended the grant to change it, which would be in the instance that we would sell it. So I think we may have timeliness issues unless we just decided to take the grant and nothing else. Go ahead.
Thank you. One thing I did know, as Councilor Young mentioned, if we were to sell it to C Mar, HUD requires a minimum of a five-year covenant that it still be used for serving people who are low income in the community. But we could instill a longer covenant on the property that would ensure that it's being used for people who are low or moderate income and meet the requirements there without having a significant impact to program income. And C Mar would be gaining equity in the building itself by purchasing it.
Okay, Kathleen, is it all clear?
Yes. We're moving forward with the grant. We'll look at all the other options and bring it back to council.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca and Michelle.
Thank you, council. Thank you, council.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on to council reports. Are there any?
I have a report.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, Counselor Fuentes and I had the opportunity to go tour the Dabler Forest Sale, and it was a, it was a public citizen-led tour, and I'm sorry that Carmen couldn't make it. We left on time, as far as I understand, we weren't in charge, we were participants. Uh, the group showed, um, we got to see where the seven acres that were clear cut, and then we got to see a little bit of the timber sale itself. I stayed an extra two hours and hiked the perimeter myself. I went down a pretty steep slope into the area that we were most concerned about that was directly adjacent to a, uh, protected old growth stand where we potentially could request a buffer. To me visually, the, the stand was very similar in, in age and diversity, but overall the, the stand for sale was, uh, diverse, it was older growth. It, uh, much of it was naturally regenerated from the Yakult burn, which was over a hundred years old. Um, the trees that were dropped, I have some pictures of them, actually looked at the old growth ring, rings, which were really interesting because right after the fire you have a lot of sun, so the tree growth rings were really thick for the first, uh, decades. And then as the canopy closed, the growth rings became very tight. But the interesting thing we saw there was a chainsaw, uh, old, um, stumps from about the 50s or 60s, so that the, they actually went in there and did a thinning project what let, which let in more sun, so you'll see the growth rings, uh, thicker again, uh, around the 50s or 60s. Anyway, uh, some of those trees are over a hundred years old. Um, it's a, it's a stand that is, um, kind of unique in our county. We have very few of these, uh, left, and so that's why we were advocating to the Public Lands Commissioner to have a conversation with us about his plans for the older growth forests and how that particular unit, um, plays into it. But I just want to give a report that I, we got to see it, and did you want to mention anything about your experience?
I didn't spend as much time as you did. I didn't go on a hike down a, down a ravine, but, uh, no, I agree with everything that she said. And, um, has the meeting between the two counselors and Up the Grove been scheduled?
Not that I'm aware of.
I thought there was a date that was being solidified, um, Michelle or Jordan with the Public Lands Commissioner and Counselor Little and Chair Marshall.
Yes, we are working on finalizing a date. I'm not, I don't think we've totally closed out. Like, we were hoping to have a work session with some county, uh, folks, Kevin Tyler from Public Lands, as well as Hunter Decker, our, uh, county forester. Uh, we were hoping to have that, basically trying to get the schedule so that we had that conversation with our internal county folks before, uh, the internal meeting with, uh, Commissioner Up the Grove and Chair Marshall and Counselor Little. Um, and so I think we're close to finalizing that. I'm, I'm not sure if, uh, that's been a hundred percent finalized, but, um, I know we've got a few dates that we're looking at or have been looking at here, uh, I think in April.
And sorry, I, if you're going to cover a little bit more in policy today, or should we talk about, there is a meeting on, uh, injunction hearing on Monday? Any?
Uh, yes, I was, I was going to mention, but the update is very brief. The, uh, preliminary injunction hearing was held on Monday, uh, and it sounds like, uh, they expect a decision, uh, on Friday, uh, is, is the current, uh, understanding.
Okay, any other council reports?
Sure.
Yes.
So Counselor Fuentes and myself were able to go and tour Tri Mountain Golf Course and, uh, appreciate, uh, being able to do that. And we met with, with Indigo and, you know, the management team there. And, uh, to be honest with you, it was pretty much exactly what I had envisioned, which was a, a beautiful golf course that all of the infrastructure is rotting away. You know, it hasn't been invested in for many years properly, and so creates a situation where the feasibility of it being a golf course is in jeopardy every day that it continues to get into worse condition. Um, and I will say the one thing that I did learn was that it's not as open to the public as I had originally thought it was. I had envisioned that, you know, it's an area where people can walk around. I remember, I grew up in Portland in Glendover Golf Course, you know, it has massive, you know, fully mature trees all around the golf course. And so there is, on the outside perimeter, there's a, a walk where all the public can go, can't do that here because there aren't those large trees which are a barrier to golf balls. So there's the risk of people getting hit and the liability issues with that, so you can't do that. Um, so, you know, just, just one of my thoughts in future deliberation on Tri Mountain is, and, and we spoke with the, the manager there, and he had expressed some ways of maybe making it a little bit more accessible to the public in general, but I think that's an important part that should be had. You know, if we maintain ownership of it, it, it should be available to the public and not just to people that are paying to go golf. There are public benefits for sure. There were multiple students there that I talked to that were, you know, part of their school curriculum. So anyway, just wanted to give that heads up, and I don't know if.
No, there was definitely value in, um, in touring, uh, the golf course and seeing firsthand, um, the amount of work that needs to be invested, the amount of money that needs to be invested to, um, to ensure that it's sustainable for the future. And, um, it was a pleasure to see a lot of students, including a couple of clinics with like, I don't know, preteen kids, you know, practicing how to golf, so I can see the value for the community. Uh, but again, like a lot of properties that the county, uh, owns, it's concerning that we've, um, kind of left them, you know, to deteriorate, so.
Okay, thank you for your tours. Uh, any other council reports? Okay, let's move on to work session requests.
None today.
Okay, policy updates. We've got five items.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, again, for the record, Jordan Bogie, policy analyst, uh, got a number of things for you here today. The first, uh, just wanted to give you a few legislative updates. As you'll recall from our conversation with our lobbyists on Monday, the initial versions of the House and Senate operating and transportation budgets, uh, have been released. It sounds like the capital budgets, uh, are going to be released next week. Uh, and, uh, just to give you a few updates on those budgets, uh, so 179th Street, the I-5 interchange there that we've been keeping an eye on as a priority for the county in terms of funding, uh, it is in the House transportation budget. It is, the Senate released two versions of their transportation budget, one with new revenue assumed and one without new revenue assumed. Uh, 179th Street Project was in the Senate transportation budget that assumes new revenue. The one that does not assume new revenue, it is not in. Uh, so if for some reason, uh, the legislature decides not to add any new revenue, uh, which seems a little unlikely at this point, as there have been a number of revenue proposals that have come out over the last week, um, we might be in trouble with the 179th Street funding for transportation purposes, uh, but, uh, we're keeping an eye on that. Um, we've worked with public work staff to develop a one-pager, uh, to disseminate to, uh, lawmakers, and so I feel like we're in a good position to defend that funding, uh, if needed, but, but we're in an okay spot there. And, uh, with the capital budgets that are going to be released here, uh, coming up, uh, it sounds like next week, I just wanted to let you know that Representative McClintock is, uh, has been really proactive in supporting our local request for 1.5 million dollars of support for architecture and engineering services from the jail. Uh, and I think they actually just reached out to Director Shook and some folks yesterday to get a few more talking points as they finalize those capital budgets, uh, so that we can be as well positioned as possible to, uh, try to get that funding as well. Uh, so we'll keep council updated with, uh, as, as the legislative process moves on. Um, but those are just a couple of updates, uh, related to the budget that I wanted to provide.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, maybe that was new to me. Did you say 1.5 million Representative McClintock is helping us out with, and it's in the budget for the jail?
Uh, so it's, so there's a, there's a process by which we can do, uh, it's called local community projects. And so, uh, we were able to submit, uh, those forms on behalf of some of the, uh, folks who are on the, uh, House and Senate, uh, capital, uh, capital budget committees. And, uh, Representative McClintock is on the House Capital Budget Committee, and she had encouraged us to submit a project, uh, for that. And so we did, uh, this last, I can't remember exactly when we submitted it, I think it was, uh, early February, but we've been working on it for a little while. But, um, to submit a request for support for architecture, uh, architecture and engineering services as part of the, uh, jail update. And so, um, so this is us essentially just, you know, it's, it's not part of a larger programmatic, uh, spending, uh, process, but it's, it's, it's almost kind of like a proviso in which, you know, you can get some of these local community projects funded, and so that's the process by, by which we're going to try to get some support there.
Great. And, and did Senator Paul Harris, is he maybe on the Senate side able to support the same request? Have we talked to him?
Yeah, we have. So our, we, we've made our whole, uh, legislative delegation aware of the request, and, um, I would, you know, I'm, I, I haven't talked to Senator Harris specifically, but I do know that he's been really engaged in the, in the jail. Um, he's, he's gone on a tour, um, and I know that he's been really active in, in supporting our efforts to update the jail, so I would, um, I'd be hopeful and optimistic that, that he would be supportive of this on the Senate side as well.
Okay, well, if there's any way we can thank them or encourage them, I would be up for that. That's great.
Jordan, real quick, um, we did submit a letter to Senator Harris' office as a partner with the McClintock request, so I, that we did receive that from his office. So I just wanted to put that out there, that he's been super supportive of, of that request with McClintock as well.
Perfect, thanks Amber.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Uh, and so the next thing I'd like to bring forward is related to House Bill 1258, uh, and the request, uh, last week from council to write a letter in support, uh, or I guess in opposition to, uh, House Bill 1258, which as you'll recall, this is the, uh, bill that, uh, impacts, uh, the distribution of 911 excise tax dollars between Spokane County and the City of Spokane. Uh, and the fear that our emergency management folks have had is that, um, this could be expanded to other counties and essentially would fracture and dilute the way that we provide regional emergency management services, uh, and dispatch services. So I, I have the letter here that I've drafted, uh, looking for a, a thumbs up from council if you're supportive. And I do believe, um, that Dave Fuller from Cressa is online, uh, if, uh, if council has any other specific questions that they would like answered this week.
Dave, Dave is actually here in person. Are there any questions? Any questions? Go ahead, Councilor.
Yes, uh, you know, yes, was that yesterday? Yeah, it was yesterday, the fact retreat. You know, we were able to have a.
Yes, it was.
We were able to have a quick conversation, Counselor Marshall and I were able to have a quick conversation with Scott, um, from Cressa. And, uh, I'm not sure, I, I feel like there should be some, some more wording in this about the, the real, to me, it seems a little bit, um, superficial, I would say. The real issue is the, the disconnect and the fragmentation of an important system, um, into, you know, one, from one system into multiple, and then having, having redundancy in systems, both systems having to pay for the same things, whereas they used to only pay once. I don't know if we can add any language to that.
If, yeah, I mean, if, I'd be happy to add whatever language council would like.
I think that's a good suggestion. I'd be supportive of adding some language about, uh, making the system more efficient, uh, and not fragmenting it. So, give thumbs up or any other questions? Thumbs up all around here.
Wonderful, thank you, council. Would you like to see this letter one more time after I add this language, or are you okay with me just adding, uh, that language and, and sending it off?
I'd be okay. My.
I'd be okay too. Yep, we're good.
I, I just want to ask the, the question, is there a downside to sending this letter? Are there other counties that are, have the opposite opinion and we'd be getting on their bad side?
As we've been informed, it's just Spokane, Spokane County and Spokane, the City of Spokane.
So my, my understanding, and, and maybe Dave can, can speak to this more, but from what I've heard from, uh, generally is that regional emergency management folks, uh, from across the state are eyeing this sort of nervously. We are not the only county, uh, the, only non-Sokan County, county who has concerns about, you know, what might happen if, if this were to pass and then the potential knock-on effects.
I, I'm going to ask Cressa to just come to the mic and say a few words.
Good afternoon, councilors. I'm Dave Fuller, I'm the director of Cressa. Um, and just a little bit of a point of clarification, this is really related to the 911 communications and not so much on the emergency management side. Um, and particularly what this looks at is the 911 excise tax that you guys collect, um, for the ability to receive 911 calls and process them and all of the infrastructure associated with that. Um, state law puts that responsibility at the county level. Um, it's up to the county to make sure that that service is available to citizens, uh, and really leaves it up to the county to decide how best to do that. What we're concerned about with this House Bill 1258, uh, is it's actually forcing the county to split their excise tax revenue and give it to another entity that wants to stand up a, a dispatch center. There's some very specific limitations on how excise tax money can be used, 911 excise tax can be used. I think that the way that the bill's currently worded is, um, poor, sets a pad precedence and potentially allows for a misappropriation of funds. Um, there are other laws in place that probably do a better job of, of defining how cities and counties would split revenues. Most of those require some ILA to, to occur, and if they can't come to an agreement, that it goes to, to a judge to decide. Um, the precedent that's being set here though is that it's saying, no, the county doesn't get to have a voice in it, and we're just going to strip the money away. Um, so there's a lot of us as 911 directors, particularly ones that are overseeing the regional centers that are concerned about how this is being approached. Um, Spokane seems to be the one that's driven it, and when you're looking at the House bill, it looks like it's very specifically written for Spokane. Um, however, the concern is that, uh, it would be easily saying, well, if you put it in place here, then it should apply in other ways. So we very much appreciate the, the fact that you're helping oppose this, um, and believe that there's, it's just a bad bill right now, so.
Thank you for that additional information.
You bet.
So we're all good on the letter? And Jordan will add a little bit more language as suggested.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, what else do you have there, Jordan?
Great, thanks, council. Uh, so sticking on, uh, 8.1 still, just a few bills I'd like to give you some updates on. On Monday, we, uh, had a conversation about House Bill 1491. This is the bill around transit-oriented development, and, uh, there was a request on Monday to, uh, go back, uh, chat with some of the planning staff and just kind of get a sense of how this might impact us here in Clark County. And so I had a chance to, uh, send an, uh, an email to Oliver, asking for a little bit more context. And, uh, basically the upshot for us is that for the most part, uh, 1491 would not apply to the, the county. The one exception to this would be along the Highway 99 corridor where C-Trans is, uh, going to be putting in their, uh, their new Vine Line, the, the Bus Rapid Transit on the Highway 99 corridor. And so it would, uh, impact some of the development regulations, uh, in that corridor, but that would be the only impact to the, uh, to the county. And so, uh, that's where some of those transit-oriented development requirements might, uh, would come into play. Uh, otherwise, it, it really is targeted at, at cities for the most part.
Uh, was that perceived as positive, negative, neutral by Oliver?
My sense, I, I don't want to necessarily speak for Oliver, but the, the email response I got back from him was pretty neutral. Just in that, you know, we would have to update some of our codes if, if this bill were to, to pass specifically there. But that for the most part, it wouldn't have a significant impact outside that on the, on the county.
Okay. Anyone have any opinion on, we just let this one go and see what happens? Okay. I think we're, we're happy to be, have no position on this one.
Okay. And then the other couple of updates I wanted to give you on, and just a couple of other bills. 5696, which would allow for capital use for mental health sales tax, has an exec session tomorrow. And so that is, that is moving forward. And then I wanted to let you know a little bit about 5798. And this is part of the revenue package that has been put forward by, by the Senate. And this would be a pretty significant change to local property tax levies and how that works. So right now, as you know, we're limited to a 1% increase in the property tax limit each year. This, there is a, this bill in the Senate, 5798, would change that so that you could take either the 1%, keep it flat at 0%, or you could take the factor of inflation plus yearly population growth. So I, I took a look at like, what would that mean for 2024? And so in 2024, inflation, and they define this as inflation in the western region of the US, was 2.6%. And then the county population increased 1.66% over that year, which via this bill would round up to 1.7%. And so that would mean that the county could potentially have taken either the 0%, 1% or 4.3%, which is the combination of inflation and population growth. And, you know, inflation has been fairly high and population growth is high in the county. And so this would allow for potentially some fairly larger increases than what we've seen before in the allowable property tax levy that, that local governments could take. The House version of this bill caps the local increase at 3%. And so those are kind of the two competing visions for changes to the local property tax levies that are being considered right now in the House. And so that would be quite significant for, for the county. And so I just wanted to, to give you all an update that, that that's what the legislature is, is thinking about right now in terms of local revenue. There are also a number of state revenue proposals. I, I did send counsel a few pieces of information on that. If you're interested in, in learning more, there's pretty significant revenue packages. In fact, I think the House raises about 13.5 billion over the next five year or four years. And the Senate version of the revenue package would raise about 17 billion over the next four years if fully implemented. And that is through a number of different tax increases as well as a reduction in the state sales tax from 6.5% to 6%. So raising some of these other taxes and lowering the sales tax looks to be the, the mechanism that is currently under discussion.
Counsel, go ahead.
Thank you, Jordan. On the, on 5696 for executive session tomorrow, do the authors of the bill have information from us about the real world example that we're in the middle of right now? That they could help fund the bridge shelter if this passed? Do they have information?
They, they do. Yes. I actually testified last week in front of the House Finance Committee and told them about some of the projects that we have under consideration.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, counsel. So moving on to 8.2 under policy updates. We received a letter last week from Ms. Jay's fifth grade class in Hoquim. And they have requested that the county council pass a resolution protecting Bigfoot or Sasquatch, as you prefer. There are six other counties that currently have resolutions to this effect. Skamania County was the first in 1969 to protect Bigfoot, which, you know, you've been to Skamania, there's a lot of great Bigfoot habitat out there. So that's not a surprise. But Watcom, Graves Harbor, Clallam, Mason and Jefferson County all have also passed resolutions to that effect. And so I wanted to bring forward this request to, to counsel. And if there's a thumbs up, I can work to put together a resolution for counsel to, to consider. But I just wanted to take counsel's temperature on the thought of a resolution to protect Bigfoot.
Counselor Little?
Yeah, thank you. I'm surprised the public didn't come out Bigfoot enthusiasts today for public comment. But, and I, I think this is really cute. It's coming from outside of our county though. It's not a request from inside our county. I, I just don't know why we would take. I, I think if there is interest from our residents, it, you know, we, we'd consider it a little bit more seriously if it was coming from someone inside the county.
I think there may be a nexus with the Dabler Forest, actually.
You think there's a Bigfoot out there?
Could be.
Mount, Mount St. Helens, they have old films from the eighties.
I'm not, I'm not going into a Bigfoot debate here.
He's been spotted in many different counties across the state, so I, including Clark County. And so which is why I believe they're writing to us for a resolution or a law protecting Bigfoot.
I think it would allow for, for connectivity, Counselor Little.
I missed that. Sorry.
It, it would allow for some connectivity between the counties. So I think that makes it relevant.
Okay. Yeah. And Skamania County did pass a resolution, as I understand, it's been on the books for a while. I would like to hear from locals. I don't think this should be a council generated thing. I'm not really interested in it at this point.
Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I, I, I get the sentiment from Counselor Little and I, and I somewhat agree with it. But I also think this is a chance to show young kids that they can make a difference in their local governments and even further than local. So I, I would support moving forward with it.
I could support it too.
I would support it as well. And I would like to see some of those other resolutions. Counselor, Elka?
Yeah, I would, I, this is a great civics lessons for these kids. I think it's great.
Yeah. And I, and I actually think it's bigger than Bigfoot itself. I think it's the wonder of the wild. So I'll help you work on that resolution, Jordan.
Wonderful. Thank you, counsel. And if you are interested in seeing some of the other resolutions, I did send you all an email last week and did link to all the other resolutions, except I think I had a hard time finding Jefferson counties. But, but you do have some examples in your email inbox if you'd like to see more.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
All right. Moving on. So 8.3. And so I was asked last week to draft a letter and a resolution for, so a letter for our federal delegation, asking them to protect Medicaid funding from any potential cuts, as well as the resolution. Unfortunately, I was unable to get the resolution ready for today, but I do have the letter drafted for counsel's consideration if you're interested. I also know that Trish Buescher from the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board, who, their testimony, I think, led to counsel's request for this. She is available online if there are further questions about Medicaid or the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board from counsel.
Thank you. Any comments from counsel? I think thumbs up all around. Yep, we're good. Thank you, Jordan. And are we also interested in a resolution? Add a little more visibility to this issue and our support for no cuts? Yep. Yeah. So we'll, we'll see that when it, when it gets to us.
Thank you, counsel. I'm hoping to have that for you.
Just one quick comment, and I've neglected to mention this in council reports that, that I think it was yesterday that the advisory board met, I'm the liaison to the council, and just I appreciate the, the work that they do. You know, they're, just to update the council real quick, there is also a disability advisory committee that is a part of the elections office. And right now they're looking at the potential and whether it would be beneficial for the two committees to merge and become one. And they had a great conversation on how different possibility of, you know, getting people to honor the handicap parking spaces that are assigned for people with disabilities that are being used by people that don't need them. So appreciate the work that they're doing in that committee.
It's a great idea. There's value in them merging. Okay. Thank you for that. Anything else? I guess 8.4.
Great. Thanks, counsel. And yes, thank you, Counselor Young, for talking about the Accessible Community Advisory Committee, which has just been around for about six months now. And they're also doing great work between them, the Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board and the elections folks. We have a lot of people really working on accessible services throughout the community, and we really appreciate that. The congressionally directed spending requests I did mention a little bit before. So the other piece of this that I didn't get into is that we are able to submit any number of requests. And so there are a couple of other items that I just wanted to get counsel's thumbs up on potentially moving forward with. And if I get your thumbs up, I would work with Michelle Schuster to identify some of the details for, for any of these projects. But in addition to the CMAR building, which my understanding, based on my conversations with Caitlin Harrington from Senator Murray's office, was probably the most competitive proposal based on our list. There is also a potential funding we could apply for, for the medical examiner's office, for the courthouse, for potential upgrades, to support some of the different clean building work that needs doing across the county to get up to, to different green building standards, as well as there's a lot of facility improvements and maintenance over the next 20 to 40 years. I think something like $300 million across the, the county over the next several decades of facility improvements that are needed. And so with, with your thumbs up, I'd like to work with Michelle to identify a few other projects besides the CMAR building to, to apply for congressionally directed spending funds as well.
I think thumbs up all around. Just keep us posted. And I understand you're working closely with the, with the staff of those, those elected officials. So we'll get a sense of what is the most competitive.
Yes, absolutely. And just to also kind of let you know about the process. So they pool them together. So I think it's a state delegation, you know, they work to submit their own requests. But if, if we submit the CMAR request to Senator Murray, Senator Cantwell, and Luzen Camperez, one of them would be the one to, you know, actually move that forward in the budget. And so if we submit multiple requests, there's a potential world in which, you know, each of our federal representatives might be able to put a project forward. And so the more bites of the apple, the better.
Great. Counselor Young?
Yes, I was just curious, and Amber question here, is there no parts of the jail that we could be looking at for this? I know the jail as a whole, probably not, because that's typically state funded. But are there any components of it that might be?
I'll touch on this a little bit. And Jordan, if you want to go a little bit further, typically the requests that we see are anywhere. It depends on the process, but that one we talked about earlier with McClintock, it's one to two million is that sweet spot range. And we can only identify architecture and engineering as a portion that we could kind of extrapolate out right now, because it does have to be spent in a certain timing as well. So when we look at the projects for the medical examiner's office, the courthouse is about 1.5 million right now. And we're in the architecture and design for that currently. So that's why we chose those projects, because they're quicker moving rather than over a six to seven year period of time, which is what the jail will be when we start to do that process. So that's, that was our thought process behind that. Yeah.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you, Jordan.
Thank you. And then I do have a few items under 8.5 other.
Oh, other, that's, I forgot about that.
I gotta, I gotta have that in there because a lot of things have come up in the last few days. So one, one item that did come up, we received a request from some former sheriff's deputies for a memorial plaque out in, in front of the 78th Street Operations Building. Back in November of 1976, unfortunately, we had a deputy who was accidentally killed by, by another deputy in the process of apprehending a robbery suspect. And it sounds like there may have been some efforts to rename the 78th Street Operations Center after him. It sounds like we haven't been able to necessarily confirm those council proceedings, although there is a, there is some news articles to that effect back from 2014. But in the meantime, these deputies have organized a memorial plaque to place out in front of the building. And so they are looking for council support to place that plaque out near the flagpole out in front of the 78th Street building. And so I'd just raise that for, for counsel's consideration. We just received that letter this week.
Jordan, if I can add a little bit of context to this, so about two and a half years ago, Chief McCabe at the time brought this forward. And we looked through, Rebecca in our office looked through a year and a year or so of proceedings so that we could verify this. What Jordan's saying is accurate, where there was some newspaper articles at the time that was talking about that, it was approved by counsel. So we had been working on this for a while, and this was brought forward by the sheriff's office to get this out at the, the 78th. So I just wanted to provide that context. This has been going on for a while and we've tried to find the archives and, and it's been a long time, but there is newspaper articles to support.
So it was pre-approved by a previous council or not?
We don't have record of that. It's just what spoke about in the newspaper article. Yeah.
Okay. Comments by anyone?
I'm just wondering, can't we just name the building after him?
You can. I do believe that there's been other requests that have been denied on that. But I think the plaque would be sufficient.
And the flagpole. Yeah.
I, I would be supportive of a plaque.
Okay. Great.
And I apologize for this taking so long.
Yes.
Okay.
Thumbs. We got thumbs?
All thumbs up, all thumbs up. Thank you.
Thank you, counsel. The next item I have for you today is just following up on America 250. We had a discussion a couple of weeks ago about the 250th anniversary of the US. And Chair Marshall volunteered to, to help out with some of the convening on that. So I just wanted to say thank you to the chair and give other councilors a reminder that if you are interested in participating as well, you know, in that process at all, just let me know. I think for the most part, we probably wouldn't want to have more than two just to, to, for ease of, of meeting purposes and not having to notice everything.
And we'll keep you posted as things move along. And there's something perhaps to report.
Yeah, there's, there's probably not going to be much to report on for the next at least three or four months. I think as I understand the timeline. And then the next item I have for you today, we just received this request, I think this morning. Fort Vancouver Regional Library has requested a proclamation for National Volunteer Week. This is something counsel has done the last several years at least. And is a great opportunity to celebrate, you know, all those who volunteer. It's a week that happens annually in April. And so I just would look to see if counsel is interested in doing that again this year. And if so, I will bring a proclamation for you next week.
Sounds great. Thumbs up, thumbs up all around. Is there anyone on the council who'd be interested in reading the proclamation?
I wouldn't mind that one.
Okay.
That one's in my district.
Great.
Spend quite a bit of time down there.
Good. Thank you. Any other?
Wonderful. Thank you, counsel. And then just the, the final item I have. Counselor Little had asked me to bring up, I know we've all been following what's going on with Columbia River Mental Health. And he was interested in, if And he was interested in if counsel wanted to think about what might be done to be able to support them at this at this time. And so I just would like to to raise that item for a a policy discussion for counsel.
Kathleen?
Yeah, if I could just share it, I believe I shared this in our one on ones. They're still working through their own process. We have limited jurisdiction. We really only have a couple contracts. When we heard that there may be an issue, staff did reach out to their CEO and provided them steps if they were to ask for financial assistance, like through a loan, in which, you know, it would be a detailed letter of what that is that would come through me to you. It would also include a public process, including our auditor's office going in and looking at their financial books. We have not received any requests from them. And I know that their board has been meeting regularly. I don't know the update on that. But if we receive, and like I said, we've been proactive in reaching out to them. If we receive any options or anything that counsel can consider, I will let you know as soon as possible.
Great. Thank you for reaching out. Any other comments? It's a huge blow to our community, and I think across the board, people are concerned about that. So as we can keep the public updated, as we know what might be going on, that would be great. Okay, Jordan, is that it?
That does conclude my policy items for this week. Thank you all.
Thank you. So no executive sessions today. And without objection, this meeting is adjourned.